All right, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 22 of Acts of 2022, signed by Governor on Friday, on February 15th, 2022, I announced that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board office via Zoom, and ask if there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Let the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. So I'm move pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 28A.3, that the Board goes into executive session to discuss strategy in respect to potential litigation to reopen in open session. As the Chair, I determine that the public discretion of which would have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the Board.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Chungloo? Chungloo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Isar?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move into public comments, a 15-minute period. Please limit your comments to three minutes so the others may have a chance to speak. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right. Consent agenda. Warrants AP 2354, AP 2354R, AP 2354S, AP 2353, AP 2353S, AP 2355S, AP 2355, AP 2400V, AP 2401, AP 2401S, AP 2400INS, AP 2402S, PR 2400, PR 2326, PR 2327. Minutes, February 1st and June 7th of 2023. Resignation from the Hadley Media Production Assistant, Abigail Morton. Intermunicipal Agreement, City of Northampton and Town of Hadley, Sealer of Weight and Measures. Intermunicipal Agreement, City of Northampton and Town of Hadley, Veterans Services.
Can I just pull, I asked to have pulled the two intermunicipal agreements. I just have a real quick question on both.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those two items?
Second?
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Jane? All those in favor? Or I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just a quick questions I have about the intermunicipal agreements. So for the Sealer of Weight and Measures, the dollar amount, the 20,000 or so that's in there, I'm just curious how that compares to what we paid them for the last contract cycle? And who's reporting to us what, you know, how, if they're getting all of the required inspections or whatever done? And then Veterans Services, fully familiar with that service, but same question, just about the dollar figure, is that comparable to the last year? Is it higher? And is this all covered in our budget right now?
Let's go to the Veteran Services first, and can you answer that, Steve?
Yeah. So.
Oh yeah, sorry, come on up.
Come on up.
Now you get comfortable, like sit back. Yeah, so the exact numbers, I'm not in my head, but what I can say is that we budgeted numbers and it was an increase in every single community. But in May, we were reached out to from the town of Huntington, who then proceeded to join our district. So whatever we projected in your original budget, it has gone down because the numbers you got, it went down because we had a new town. And we didn't really need to increase the hours at that point because the other communities are right there. So our office hours are right.
Okay.
So, so yeah, so it did go up from year to year because our health insurance went up. But the, but the original budget that we proposed back in the spring actually went down some because we now have a new community.
All right, thank you.
Then I did see DeeDee pop in. DeeDee, do you have input on, uh, Weight to Measures?
Yes, so way back, Weights and Measures, they were billing us in August for the following year. And so what we decided to do is to change it and we put money into the account so we could make sure they got paid. So right now, the money in there actually, they counteracts each other. So it's just to make sure we always have money in the account. I have, they did just do the inspections, but we had to pay the bill last August for the inspections that were just done this past spring. So now we do get extra, probably a couple thousand dollars extra a year that gets added to that account. So that's why we made it its own suffered account now.
Okay, thanks, DeeDee.
You're welcome.
Make a motion to approve the two intermunicipal agreements as presented?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Jane? Roll call vote, or sorry, is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Isar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Food truck regulations?
I have a question in the letter we got. It talks about.
Can Jane speak up? She's a little low.
Maybe I'll put my microphone here, how's that?
That's great.
Perfect.
Perfect.
All right, in the discussion of this, in our agenda, it says, Section 2 talks about licensing only on public property. Section 8.1 mentions licenses on private property. It seems to appear that the Select Board will license food trucks on public and private property. This is exactly what we want, if not, if not, the regs are not adequate. So when you actually look at the regs, there is a section that's called Section 9, which says, let me get there. Events licensed by the town of Hadley and food trucks hired for one-day private events on private property are exempt from these regulations and do not require a license, provided they comply with 527 CMR Fire Prevention Regulation and 105 CMR 590. So I don't know if that is what we wanted to say or not.
No. Can I, can I explain that?
Thank you.
That was from Fanning, that was feedback from Fanning.
Section 9 is if somebody has a private party, like a wedding or a bridal shower or something like that, and they have a food truck giving out food at that private party, it is exempt from the licensing. However, if a entity, let's say, uh, let's just say, uh, Aldi's wants to have a food truck in front of their property, like a hot dog selling hot dogs for a couple of days a week, that would need to be licensed. And that would, is where the private on private property, and that is what's something that we still want to have the Select Board issue a license for.
And if Aldi's only wanted to have it for one day?
Even if they only want to have it for one day because they're actually selling food at their private, on their property.
Okay, so it's a selling versus covered by your visiting.
Covered, typically, if you're having a wedding, people are coming, I mean, they are, the food truck is getting paid, but they're not getting paid by each person. They're not selling it to each individual. The person putting the party on will give them one lump check at the end of the day. So it's kind of a private, the public isn't invited.
Okay, thank you, that makes it clear.
So private parties, no. Open for business, people buying, yes.
So what our concerns has been, what if someone wants to set up a, rent a driveway along Route 9, park a food truck there and sell to the people who are stuck in traffic? Or the traffic workers? We'd like to have some oversight over something like that.
Yes.
Yes.
And we're not sure if these regulations provide that oversight.
Yeah, that's what that comment means. It appears that it does between Section 5 and Section 8.1, I mean, Section 2 and Section 8.1, but it's not exactly clear that it's required for that to have licenses. And I just, we'd just like to see it made more clear.
So the only thing I was going to say, because I thought when we had, I think Lisa Mead, I don't know that the Select Board should be involved in those because the Select Board itself doesn't have purview over the private property, right? Is what my understanding was from that?
Well, you issue a license to a food, to a restaurant, that is a private property.
Yeah, we do all the licenses in town.
I don't know why I was thinking that it like wasn't for us.
There's a gap of, there's an understanding gap here that on the one hand, you do have the common vitler license, you do have the hawkers, peddlers, and tradespeople authority, you have the authority. And at town meeting, we had, at Springtown meeting, we had a full bylaw to regulate food trucks. And at that time, I thought the ruling from Lisa Mead is that you, you as a Select Board had inherent authority to take care of those things. And so we pulled the article to create a bylaw to regulate food trucks. And then more recently, someone from her office was here and said, no, can only, you can only regulate on public property. So there's, there's a gap here between what town council, town council is, what they're saying, what we're looking for seem to not have meshed yet.
So Amy, if it would help, we did get that feedback from Fanning yesterday. I forwarded those questions to legal, I haven't heard from them back specifically because that vagueness was brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, are we, I mean, I don't feel like we're prepared because of this to vote tonight, so.
I would say not.
Are we holding anything up? Is there anybody in limbo right now while we're dealing with this?
The only place it's operating with a food truck, right, is already operating.
And they're already operating.
And that was intentional on y'all's behalf, y'all. While this is being decided, that is still, that they are operating fully licensed by the Board of Health and the Fire Department have done their inspections. So it's just your transient hawker.
Okay.
All right, so this will be on next agenda.
So let's, yeah, let's table this.
And there's also the issue about a public hearing for every food truck permit.
So public hearing, it might not be the right word. We might want to readdress that because y'all do vote on every transient hawker peddler license, every one-day alcohol license. And that's just sort of the way of doing business within the town of Hadley and in any other town, frankly. If you want to hold an event in town, you go, you find out what the schedule is and you do it and you make your schedule adjust to their schedule. And that's just how businesses operate. Y'all are the licensing authority in town with jurisdiction of this. So first and third Wednesdays of the month, 48 hours in advance. It's, it's, it's pretty reasonable.
Usually on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry?
Isn't it usually on the consent agenda unless it's something?
Controversial.
Yeah.
I also asked the attorney that question as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So. So we need to take out the public hearing because this is the public hearing.
Let's wait for the, let's wait for town council to give me a response. If I don't think it's clear, I'll also reply CC, planning, and see if they understand it. If it's clear, if they have additional questions, I'll send it back to legal. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Did he have something to say? He was kind of, wanted to say something there, Jim?
Well, I was just saying that the public hearing, the way it's worded, public hearing is a specific process. It's legal notice in the newspaper or sticker that says that the applicant shall pay for the cost of a public hearing. So I think what, what you intend and what the wording is, like you're right, it's two different things. And you don't want the, if you would, the legal public hearing for what you're doing, you just want a hearing to the public without all the notification and the cost. Because that's a, that's a huge burden on everybody and probably a very unnecessary one.
Okay. That sounds fair.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
So it's tabled until the first week of August, correct?
Yes.
Just to let the planning board know, Jim and Bill, that it'll be tabled till the first week of August?
Yep. This, this, this food truck regulation actually came from the bylaw committee and the planning board got involved when we found out that it wasn't permitted anywhere. So it's actually both, both boards are working on it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, 6.1, Veterans Banners. We do have Pam here as well as our Steve. Veterans Service Officer. BSO, I was gonna say BSO, but I should, I was like, I need to say the acronym.
Oh, I got one here, yeah, thank you. Look back to what you please.
Sorry. Hear us on the line. Okay.
All right, I know somebody distributed information over to everybody so you could see it. Just trying to honor our veterans and get some of the banners up. My thought was to put them up at the same place where there's flags, that way, because there they are right now. I think those are the best spot. The program works where the, we get a sponsorship from a family, a veteran's family, the flags, and I've ordered one, I don't have it yet, it'll come in tomorrow, but I can have it for you, it's a sample. It's 24 inches by 48 inches, gets strapped to the telephone poles. East Hampton has them, Westfield has them, Belcher Town has them, West Springfield is working on a program as well. It is a military banner program that's across the country. They're trying to get it into all the cities across the country as best they can to honor all the veterans in the towns. We are looking to, the minimum order is 30. We're looking to get possibly, my goal is 75. We have a ton of veterans in this town. There's, I talked to Legion, they put out 300 flags on two veterans' graves every year. And there's 60 members of the American Legion right now, 90% of them are veterans. And then there's other ones that we just, that I can't account for. But it's basically a sponsorship. A family will sponsor a banner. Price isn't set in stone, it's anything we want to charge, but it's 150, 160 for the other towns that are doing it. So that seems like a very fair price. The banner itself is $110, that's printed on both sides. And then we have to also pay for the brackets to put it up on the telephone poles. So 150, 160 would cover all of those costs. They go up from Memorial Day to Veterans Day and then they come down. The program works where if the families that sponsor them, if they want to take the banner after we take them down that first year, they are welcome to them, they paid for them. There are other options if they want to choose to leave it with the town so we can put it up again next year. There's a printed version of the banner or one of those little garden flags. They can get either one of those as well so that they will have a replica in their hands and then we can continue to keep putting them up every year.
Does it have to, does it have to be a picture? I'm out in the, I'm up here in the world, does, does it have to be a picture, Kim?
No, and it's Pam, but no, it does not have to be a picture. It's whatever the family, whoever's sponsoring it, they can put whatever they want. It does allow for a picture, the brands that they're in, the years they served, any medals or honors that they received. We can very customize them very much to the person that is on the banner. And if you choose not to have a picture, you can just put more information.
And then I believe there were two, so the banners themselves, they're about 150. And then also, I think there are ones for, that are actually free for families as well.
So yeah, the Gold Star, if somebody's a Gold Star from 1999 forward, if it's a Gold Star family, the program itself will pay for those free, those are free. And then anybody who is recently enlisted, if they just enlisted, they will also be able to get a banner for free. So it covers everybody from just being enlisted now to all of our veterans. So I think it's a great program and a great honor.
So what I was thinking, and the Board is welcome to, to chime in, I think this would be a great private project to give you the ability to, to kind of take charge, take the lead and own it. And then after, you would come back to the Board and essentially just ask us for space. Right?
Yeah, so all of what you said is right on board, I have it all written, it's in your notes. The thing to remember is, when a veteran isn't a veteran, isn't a veteran. In other words, you want to have a committee that would basically have a check and balance about what you're doing. Now, the first thing you need to know is where you're putting them up. And if it's the same poles and they're all owned by the town, then that's not a problem. There are communities that put them up on the telephone pole, the power. Well, you gotta get permission for that. So wherever you're gonna put them, you have to figure out how many poles there are gonna be, which will then tell you how many banners you can put up for a year. Or I say the same as what she was saying, is you do it from Memorial Day till November because then you can put them up another year and give them to them before they get worn out. You keep them up all year long, the winter does damage to them. And so they're probably good for two years. If you take them down, you'd probably get three or four years on them. But who's, how many poles do you have? Who's going to go up first? All of those kinds of decisions, you really want to have a committee with a Chair to go over that and decide because we do monuments and several, monuments and name recognition in all of our towns. I now have a new guy who's usually here on Wednesdays. He's great at research. So he researches, somebody says, oh, he's done two of our monuments and found out three of them are the same person. And a couple of them are not even the residents, they didn't actually meet the criteria, but you really have to do research to find that out. So yeah, there's a ton of veterans in Hadley and, but who gets on it? It's up to the families unless we can do some fundraising to lower the cost, is one idea. But whoever wants to do it, you have to kind of prioritize who goes up first because if you have 100, but you only got 20 poles, you have an issue.
So I have a question. You said come November 12th, they come down. And let's say I have taken one for my family. Do you use that one again come Memorial?
You have the option of keeping it yourself or leaving it with the town and let us put it up again. And then you would get the option again when we take them down a year after. It is yours, you've paid for it.
It makes me really nervous for my seat here to say you're gonna give something to the town because that just means we have to store it. And I'm not saying that we can't, but I think, I think this is, personally, I like the idea. I think that we can put it as a second vote and do it in two weeks. But I think that we should approve so that they have, they know they're going to have this possibility and then you go out and do it and it's all in your lap.
You're frozen.
Somebody froze. The other thing I would say is, and you'll see it on one of your pages, we got the military tribute banners that are done by Hometown. They are approximately $150 right now with all the fixing. But the city of Boyer, if you look on another page, they did it back in 2018. Now, theirs were cheaper before 4% inflation or 8%, whatever it was. But they also had a local printer do that. Okay, so there could be an investigation of, is there a local print service that would do the same thing? It couldn't say Hometown Heroes, but they could do all like Boyer and they could put the city, the town Sealer of Hadley at the top and either a picture or all the information. So there's a lot of variables you can, you can do with this. And if we go to one of the locals like down the road here and say, what would you charge us? It might be cheaper and it might be easier for families to do. But again, we have to figure out how many we can put up on a given year, which would also decide, do you want, if there's, if there's 10 poles and 20 people want it, then you're gonna do 10 and next year you're gonna do the other 10 or.
God, how many American flags do we put up?
I don't do it because of the fire.
I tried to get, I tried to track him down last weekend and I couldn't.
I didn't know that you wanted to know that. We know it because we're the ones who buy the flags. So there is a number, I can give it to you before your next meeting.
I mean, I think that would be a number to start with.
And if you want, if you look at the flags, because they're up now, if you come down Middle Street, it's like every other pole has a flag on it. So if we can mimic in between those flags with the banners, we would have some kind of an idea of how many we could put up.
That's Middle Street or West Street.
Middle Street right here, when I was coming down, every other pole has a flag on it.
And who owns those poles?
Verizon.
Okay, so you have to ask permission of Verizon for the other poles.
There's definitely work to be done, but.
Yeah, but it's definitely, yeah, you can do it.
But would, um, would this be under the purview of the Select Board?
No, I think you're saying, yes, we approve of it, I don't think we.
I mean, anything to do with the management day-to-day of it.
Well, that's not exactly true because who's gonna put them up and who's gonna take them down? That's gotta be done by the town, I would think, unless you hire Verizon.
The town has to do that, but the town doesn't want to say, okay, Steve, we're putting up your flag, sorry Pam, you're not having yourself.
No, that's why.
That's our committee, so important. You don't want one person making that decision. And if I can just overemphasize the resources that you can get from your Veterans Service organization, they're, just like talking about the criteria, I think it is important. It doesn't have to be a large committee, but I do think. Well, I do know on the Hadley Community page, when it was brought up, just as I couldn't, I don't think, right? There was at least two or three people that said they would gladly help, but nobody wanted to spearhead it, so then.
Not for the idea, right?
But I do know with the Hometown, they verify all the BD12s, they verify everything, but I would.
Yeah, we just have a local guy who can really do the.
Make sure that they're all in there.
Yeah, because I'm telling you, we've done monuments and.
And we might be able to enlist the American Legion, you know, to, at least if we felt like we needed a place to store them or whatever. I'm sure that, you know, those guys are more than willing to participate with, with the town.
I've actually already talked to them because I wanted to know how many, how many flags you put on the graves, just a good idea of veterans. They are willing to help in any way, shape, or form they can.
Yeah, we should have them at least be on the regular committee. And one of my staff, if not me, would also be on the committee.
So if, if we did create a committee, then it would also be under open meeting law and all of that.
But we don't want to create the committee. We don't want to create the committee.
I think that's what Steve is suggesting.
Yeah, yeah, somebody's gotta create the committee, I mean.
You're, you're talking about authorizing the committee, is that correct, Jane?
I'm saying, why can't you just say, here I am, I've decided I want to do this for the town select board, is it okay if we use?
And then we go on our way.
And they go on their way and then they have nothing to do with us.
I don't know why we don't want it to have anything to do with us.
Well, do we want another committee, is the question?
It's a unique purpose and it's a very. We will give them a clear charge.
Yeah, and.
I'd be, I'd be on that committee.
There you go.
Oh, right, and because the fire department would have to be involved.
Yeah, involving city streets and city here, I mean, town streets and town.
And you may not need to have them on the committee, but you want to have them, like, I doubt Scott's gonna want to sit on there, because it's most likely usually typically it's DPW who could set stuff up, they're ambire. But um, you might just be able to use them as a resource and they may be able to caution you, well, you can't do this, you can't do that. I think you can have a small committee and I don't know that you have to think of that committee right away, this is not an overnight.
Right, right, right.
So I think maybe um.
I do think that they're better, in a better position however, to go forth with their task. If they say, we have the blessings from the select board and we have actually said that, so we need to figure out how we want to structure it and, and let you have it and then go with it.
And then there would be a, a question of if it became, because if we.
Everybody's thinking too much into this.
Well, I'm thinking about financials. I, 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 I think the advantage of having veteran services here is they have resources and that's the discussion the committee can take, what is the best way? And especially if you're going to be using any kind of town resources, any finances that you're gonna be using, you want accounting for. So I think that, that, I, I can just see Steve's head thinking, he's got all these answers. But I think we need to let them get together, say, who should be on this? And then maybe come back and say, this is who we would like on the committee. Or even, you know.
We will form a committee, but we do have to have you guys sanction it, because it's gonna be using town.
I make a motion, I make a motion to sanction this committee and to get it underway. Um, and allow Steve to set it up, come back to us and tell us what he wants to do. Um, and then we can move forward, so.
Question for a second on that one?
Yeah.
Um, from a language standpoint, Joyce, um, maybe, maybe what we can.
Clean it up, Molly.
We have Joyce.
Yeah, since it is gonna be a committee that the select board is actually appointing. Um, we could just ask Steve and Pam and whoever else they want to work with to assume, presume that you have our support to move forward and then at the next meeting, when you're ready, come back with a proposal to us.
Yep.
And then we can uh, formally um, move to, you know, approve the mission and appoint the committee at that point.
Right.
Does that work for you?
That works, yeah.
I'll second that for discussion, please. I just want to be, I want to be clear, I want to be clear on what is expected of the town other than the select board's blessing to let you move forward with this. Uh, as Amy said, there's expenses involved and I think everybody needs to understand exactly what you're gonna be asking the town to do.
So what we, what we, no, 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 what we would be asking the town to do is to hang them up, put the brackets on the poles, put them up in the beginning of May. And then after the first week of November, take them down and do that each year as we go through the banners.
Okay, thank you.
If you could probably add that to the proposal and then even put um, a timeline on it, what you think the start and stop would be.
And, and like I say, I would like to do just some pricing. Um.
Definitely it.
We can work on and the committee can decide. I'd really like to have a five-member at least committee decided, because you're always gonna have somebody saying, well, why didn't my dad go up? Right, and so we need to come up with a criteria, who goes up first? If you've got more than whatever poles, I don't know how many poles, but we can count them.
Yep, the wall swells, that's why I figured if we knew how many flags, it's basically almost the same.
Well, we're, and I can get you those numbers, but we're, we're.
The minimum order is thirty, I think we'll have that, well, with the hometown, we'll have that no problem, I was shooting for seventy.
You'll have more than seventy-five, if the families want to sponsor it. Somebody else wants to sponsor it after that, but it won't come from the town, we will get outside.
If we don't have enough family sponsors to get enough, we'll just go, I mean, flows and home depot are huge for military. I'm sure a lot of town, a lot of companies, businesses in town will donate as well, so.
Okay, so the motion was by Molly, the second was by Randy?
No, I motioned.
No, she, well, she uh.
Cleaned you up.
She cleaned you up, so motion was by you, amended motion was by Molly. And the second to the amended motion was by Randy.
Roll call?
Ready? Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yeah.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Amy, if I can just, before they go, if I can just ask you, if, since people are showing an interest to be on the committee, um, that probably should come through our office so that we can, at, at some point, if, say you get ten people who you want to be able to bring it to the select board, because you will have to help, they can make recommendations, but you'll want to have that, be that decision maker.
And try to be an odd number.
I, I was just gonna.
That is good, so can I like, put it out on the community page and see who's interested and we'll go over there?
And the email address is Sanders James J at Hadley MA dot gov. You did, that's right. The new email address.
Thank you.
Well, I'm honored.
Sounds like a lot.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
All right, so moving on to new business six point two, uh, special town meeting warrant. So we're gonna vote to open up the warrant.
Simply vote to open up?
Make a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting to be held Thursday, October twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Joyce, any discussion? Saying none, roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Isar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six point three, employee appointments, uh, fire department, police department, seniority list and employee appointments, right?
Yes. These are. Can I mute Randy till the motorcycle's on?
On his motorcycle.
Uh, yes, these are the yearly appointments for the employees. Um, I got so carried away with my boards and committees spreadsheet that I, I left all of us poor employees off, so I just need y'all to uh, um, appoint all of us again for the next year.
So can I ask just questions?
Sure.
So when I look at the list, I'm on just like the town official one?
Uh huh.
So these aren't all the town employees?
They are not, these are the.
Why, why are some people left off?
I don't think you're gonna appreciate my answer, maybe Troy can rescue me with your HR. But these are the employees that y'all have traditionally appointed. And these are the ones that we continue to appoint. I don't know if the, every employee should be appointed or not, but this is the, the list that we have traditionally used for time and on.
Well, like, I mean, just looking quickly, I just mentally go through town hall, right, so um, Sue's on here, but Kim's not.
So actually, that's because MGL says that the town collector appoints the assistant collector. So even though Sue's appointed, Sue has the authority to appoint both Kim and then there's actually a deputy collector who does the other things. That's, so it's, it's, there's a lot of MGLs behind this, but since Sue and um, Sue and Linda are both no longer elected, that's why they're both on there, but they both have appointing authority under them, under MGL.
So are we, so um, do we still appoint them even though they're under contracts?
Um, so Susan's contract will be up in twenty twenty-four and I believe Linda's is as well. So they're, but they're on here, they're just carried over. I feel noticed Carolyn's contract is on there, but it's also an adjusted date. Mike Spankables is on there, his is to be adjusted date.
Okay, but then what about like the electrical inspectors or this year?
Oh, I, I just, I just missed it.
There was a rationale.
No, that, there's no rationale, Jennifer just missed it.
But it's a good question, let's, let's look, let's dig that up.
Okay. No, that's fine, yeah.
But I will look into that and then, because I think uh, when we enter into contracts, sometimes that you might appoint them as a contract time and in their period of employment is three years. So it's not necessarily that we're, you know, blanket appointing everybody July first because of the contract requirements. So that's what we, we really need to clean up a little bit and take a look at and say, okay, does it make more sense to appoint everybody at the beginning of the fiscal year? We require for that to be there, because suddenly appointments vary in duration.
And so do we need, need to do this tonight or?
Um, I, I, I have memories coming to me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you off.
No.
This has to do with insurance purposes and David Nixon always had us reappoint um, for the fiscal years for insurance coverage. For, to make sure that all the employees were covered on this list that were covered by insurance. Is why we had always done it traditionally in the past was for insurance purposes.
But if, if we vote this tonight, I mean, as far as I know, everybody works for us that's on here, so. But if we go ahead and we vote this tonight, um, if you and Troy or Troy does some research and wants to change it, we're okay, right, you could come back to us and say, hey, like you'd update that vote, okay.
Does Sue, Sue wants to say something?
Oh, Susan.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, um, I do have authority under Mass General Auto to appoint Kim and the deputy collector, but it's always with your approval. So you folks are, are notified of that. And we don't normally handle it in the first couple of meetings. Um, and honestly, uh, everyone who is paid by the town um, as an employee is covered under our insurance. Um, unless, I mean, I, I can't even imagine uh, an instance where that would become an issue, so. That's all I can say.
All right, well, I'll make. I have a question.
Well, my question.
Looking at, looking at the town list, I see the COA director, I don't see the library director. But I know.
She's under the trust, he's under the trustees.
So the trustees do the appointments, but we pay them? Because it's in our budget line for the library?
Okay.
Um, and are we? So is this like an annual thing for the insurance purpose or are we not voting on people for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for their next appointment on this list?
My question, my question is, is why are we even doing this? When we hire somebody, that doesn't mean that we need to reappoint them every year.
It does, and I'm gonna find a reason.
Say that again?
Yeah, it's very, it's, it's any town I've worked in, there's an annual appoint, reappointment. So and, and you're either designated as an appointed employee or not. So I really think let, let uh, Troy do his homework and he'll get, he knows exactly what you're looking for and will find out the reasoning why and exactly who needs to be on that list.
Okay, so table it tonight, don't make the vote?
Um, I would recommend to take it.
Okay.
You would hire somebody and have to keep reappointing them, that seems ridiculous.
We're gonna get educated, Joyce.
I guess so, but I don't, I don't, like I say, I don't understand it, so if Troy can educate, that's great.
Good, so we have a motion in a second?
Just because we've always done it, doesn't mean that we should just blindly.
Do we have a motion in?
Did you?
He said uh, Troy. Table.
We're tabling it.
No, you're not.
Table it. Okay.
All right, moving right along then.
Okay, DPW director contract performance review, Troy is here, Troy. As is Scott.
Evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is just gonna be a quick overview of what you guys have already um, filled out um, individually. Can you throw that into the slideshow?
It already is, but why isn't it should be that way? I, I appreciate, but, no.
Yeah.
Why isn't it, doing it runs on?
We'll let Alex fix this. He's good at this stuff.
Ah, I know why. You wanna duplicate a piece?
Oh, you're like legit, like put all of our comments up in here for her to read.
Send to the reader.
Are you trying to share?
I am sharing.
I think I know why.
We don't need to go into it, just move them up to the single person and he can do it from like this, it's fine.
What am I doing? Single person?
Get rid of all the people on the side, he just, he can do it from there, it's fine.
All right, we'll move forward. Uh, so basically, we're just gonna cover everything that was uh, that was on the performance evaluation. I'll give a, just a brief overview of the background information. So where this all came about was that uh, on September twenty-first of last year, twenty twenty-two, the board, the select board entered to an employment agreement contract with uh, uh, Director McCarthy, uh, and then appointed him as the DPW director. That contract uh, is actually current until October first of twenty twenty-three. Um, but section four of the uh, of subparagraph D of the contract did state that the DPW director and select board will meet for a performance review and update at the change of the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at now in July of twenty twenty-three and why we uh, conducted the performance review.
So my thought when we wrote that was that we would sit down and Scott would say to us, because we don't have a lot of information about what he does, this is what I have done in the last year. These are things I have on my goal list and I cannot reach them because there isn't money or I have done this even without having money or we got an extra grant. But he would inform us what he was doing rather than us saying, what have you done or this is how we think you've done it. When, we have no information about that.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, you know, there, it wasn't clearly, clearly outlined in that contract. So I think moving forward is just something that we. No. Something that we clearly define moving forward, because uh, after reviewing some of the other um, contracts, it's clearly defined, like uh, for example, Chief Spankable, his, this is clearly defined where you'll talk about goals and so on and so forth. So if we look at some of the language and kind of cross, uh, make sure that our contracts are consistent and congruent moving forward, I think we'll be able to repair some of those things.
Let's just move forward here, moving on.
Moving on. So re- really, you guys all know this uh, stuff. Uh, so really, it's just fa- facts based, I simply extracted exactly what you put on the evaluation. Um, so th- those are the leadership or evaluated competencies, organizational, positional, human and interpersonal, professional, political, community, uh, relate, uh, leadership, as well as relationships with boards, committees and direct supervisor, the rating scale was one to five, one being the lowest and five being the highest. Um, so this is how it shook out um, for organizational leadership. Uh, in summary, uh, for organizational leadership, the board rated uh, Scott at a four point five. Positional leadership, um, again, overall, uh, the overall rating was a four point two five. And then human and interpersonal, the overall rating was a four point eight. Uh, professional leadership, the overall rating was a four point oh. Uh, political and community leadership, the overall rating was a four point six. And then relationships with boards, committees and direct supervisors, the overall rating was a 4.6. And so the overall rating on a five point scale was a 4.52. And then there were some additional specific areas of strengths and improvement and opportunities which you guys all evaluated. I'm not going to read them because you guys all know what you wrote. And then there were some recommended three, six and 12 month goals, which I think um you guys all know what you wrote um and we'll, and we'll be able to uh set some of those guidelines as Jane talked about um moving forward. So that was it for that presentation. Pending your comments or?
Yeah, I just want to, so first of all, Scott, for, just from my standpoint, um, where I come from, meeting expectations, when you're not even a full 12 months into a brand new job is actually a good thing. Um, so I don't want you to read anything, you know, into me giving it three other people where they did fours and fives. Um, I think my comments will speak for themselves, you know, in terms of um, my, you know, my thoughts about how you're doing, um, getting kind of piggybacking off of what uh Jane was pointing out, I also um think that it would be appropriate for us to, we didn't get any feedback from, when, when we did Carolyn's review, there um, was a strong feeling about getting feedback from peers and from employees um in your job. I'm not so sure about the direct reports, but certainly the peers. Uh, part of my comments about your interpersonal skills being so strong or because I know for a fact, I've heard nothing but great things from uh your working colleagues, you know, about the, the public safety team and everything you guys do together. So I think it would be nice again as Troy, you know, gets into his new role um, to help us do a better job, making sure we're getting a full and complete picture because we are just that much removed from your, your day to day. Um, but again, I mean, I think the numbers speak for themselves. Um, obviously we're really, really glad that decision that we all made together back in uh September or whatever it was last year.
Thank you.
Now, do we have a um? Do you have any goals or is that something that comes up later where you present your goals as to us as well? For the coming year?
My recommendation would be when you um sit down to meet with Scott in an executive session is that's where we'll outline goals for the following year.
Okay.
I just have one request. Um, Scott, I, you saw my review on you, so I don't need to reiterate what, what I wrote. Um, but one thing though, could you put the town of Hadley on your truck? Because nobody knows that it's our, our truck.
Yeah.
How is that happening?
Yes, uh, that was, that was uh the past uh chairman preferred it not to be on there because he had too many calls when the vehicle was out of town at meetings, et cetera, et cetera. And he said that he preferred to keep it off like an unmarked police vehicle or whatever, that it didn't need to be.
People get out of your way on the highway, so.
I will certainly do it.
Yeah, I thi- I think it needs to be marked as a, as a town of Hadley and very proud that you drive the truck and we, you have a good truck to drive. And if you have to go to meetings, that's our business, not anybody else's. So don't worry about it.
Yeah, yes, I understand.
And, and to, to Joyce's point, there are other vehicles in town that don't have the town of Hadley written on the sides and, and I got questioned about that the other day. So I guess we need to look into why not every vehicle that the town owns has, does not have town of Hadley on its side.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate that too.
Do you have any um questions or comments for us?
I, I appreciate you taking the time to do the review. Uh, I, I really appreciate your honesty with, you know, where improvements can be made and suggestions and, you know, I, I like working here. I, I appreciate uh the, the talent and the people. Uh, I just look forward to moving forward and being better.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super.
Can't ask for more than that, Scott.
Well, you've had a rough year. Like I said, you had a rough year with all that Route 9 shit going on and uh, I was thinking of putting our water lines in and doing all of that. And you've, you've done a good job with all that and, and making sure we had our uh things in order out there also. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Not to mention, uh, to mention uh picking up just random things to blow off the back of people's pickup trucks um when you're going. A 47 in front of my car, so.
I do whatever.
I loved it. I was laughing too.
And, and other things though is that you've had a hard time trying to, you know, keep our residents happy that have had to endure uh, a lot of the goings on with Route 9 and you've been very communicative with them and um they've appreciated it. And uh, so I thank you for that too.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Joyce. It's just the Route 9 project, every time I think that things are kind of starting to smooth out, the unfortunately the road gets rough again. That's just a uh, just the nature of the construction, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
I guess we're all waiting for the final, finality of it all. That's for sure.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, Troy needs to stay because we're gonna do the code of conduct guidelines for town board commissions and committees.
Yep. Uh, so basically uh you have before you, or you've seen the uh, the new uh code of conduct guidelines for towns, boards, commissions and committees. Uh, the reason why this has come about is uh March 7th, the uh Supreme Judicial Court ruling in the town of Southborough case between Baron and Kalinda. Uh, basically, you know, made some impacts to this and uh really this new um code of conduct is really set uh to kind of help guide uh us as municipal officials um to proceed for uh in the current environment uh post decision by the SJC. So um, it's really out there to help us, help guide us, help board our, help guide the board, um, our commissions and committees here in town.
One question on the code of conduct?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, under section five, it says distribution and education. Um, and then it refers to the town clerk. Um, the town clerk's responsibilities. Does the town uh clerk, has she been involved in this? Does Jess know?
She, I haven't communicated with her personally. Um, I know when I reviewed it, um, because this was developed by Maya, wasn't developed by us.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then distributed to um the MMA. Um, I know she already does those tasks.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's a seamless thing. Um, but I will make sure that Jessen does receive that just to.
Just don't want to surprise Jess.
Yeah. I don't either.
Yeah, and she did, I noticed this time when um I went to get sworn in for a couple of committees, she did a, a nice little like,
Yep.
Hey, state ethics training, like here you go. Here's where you find your code of conduct.
That's how I know that she does it because I see people walking around with the card. So everything in that clause is certainly something that she's already been doing and will continue to do moving forward.
I did have a question on section four because I know that we tread very lightly on the freedom of speech and the First Amendment rights. So um, I'm just looking to know, so as far as actionable items
Mm-hmm.
for conduct, um, how I read it. I'm sorry, you're so tight lipped right now.
Me too.
Okay, so all persons addressing the public body shall conduct themselves in a peaceable and orderly manner. Such persons may not make true threats of violence or incite imminent lawless conduct by others. Period. And then it goes on to encourage, but not lawfully actionable.
Exactly. So um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back away from that because I am not an attorney. Um, and I will say that this was uh presented. There was a series of, of webinars that were hosted uh by Maya in partnership with the MMA. Um, and then they did do a question and answer um for, was it Tuesday or yesterday? Um, on this specifically where people had the opportunity. So if you have specific questions and related, and related, if I would just ask that you email those to me and I'll make sure that they get presented up to Maya to make sure that we have full clarity and understanding of, of what that implication is. Um.
Cause does this fall under the, some of that sections fall under the Smith Modernization Act of 2012?
Yes, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I can't answer that question for you. All I know is that it was vetted by their attorneys. The, the attorneys had, you know, put this.
And it's, it was as a result of that case.
That, that case specifically uh made some huge implications to that clause specifically.
Okay.
So hopefully that answers the question a little bit.
It does.
The, the goal here is us to protect the boards and committees and the situations.
Yeah, and I think um, you know, my understanding from this too, from you know, every municipality handles things differently and having Maya pull this all together in one so that kind of the 350 plus municipalities have the opportunity to adopt something that's consist, consistent across the Commonwealth. Um, and to be frank, I mean, uh, this is great because for the committees that I'm on, we, you know, we can make sure that they have this along with the um the handbook that you're going to talk about next. And somebody can't say, well, I didn't know. I wasn't supposed to do that. I mean, it's, it's right in here and if accomplish nothing else, we're just setting expectations for behavior.
Agreed. Agreed. And I think that's where the SJC ruling came from is because to Molly's point is that there were different varying uh degrees of this. And um, you know, this kind of standardized it and, you know, hats off to Maya and the MMA for pulling this together.
Okay. All right. Do we need to vote on these? Do we, we need to vote on this separately from the code of conduct? Or altogether?
I think we should probably do separate.
Separate?
Agreed.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion that we um approve the code of conduct guidelines for town boards, commissions and committees effective uh July 19th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Jane. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Thank you. He's got a trolley in back of him. Every time he's put to speed.
Your timing is not very good, Jennifer.
He wants to get on that trolley and go into town, don't you?
That's cute.
I've been on, I've been on that trolley.
All right. So the handbook.
The handbook, um, full transparency. This was something that was in the works prior, with my predecessor uh prior to me coming on board. Um, received it back from the legal council the other day. Simply what you have in front of you is uh as part of my contribution was a matter of spell check and grammatical uh corrections. Um.
So this is effectively the one we've already seen.
Yeah, well, well, in a sense, and I think um and again, in light of the SJC council, the, our, our decision um or ruling, um, the council, when I reviewed his comments, um, those had now been injected into the handbook as well. So what, what is in the code of conduct is also mirrored in the handbook as well.
And um, the handbook, there's signature page.
Yep.
Um, so I know we talked about this a little bit before, but who's, could you just, whose responsibility is it to make sure that every sitting appointed committee member or elected official?
I, I would, I would offer that the chair of each board uh commission or committee um ensure that this handbook will ensure it's distributed to each uh member. And then it's the responsibility of the chair of each board commission or committee to ensure that their members um submit that back and then we get those in a consolidated manner. So that way we're not getting 800 different emails. It just comes from a chair back to the, back to uh Jennifer.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we had talked about. So um assuming that we go ahead and prove this tonight, Troy?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the chairs be responsive? How do we make sure that this gets to all of the committee chairs so and that they're instructed to do this?
Between Jennifer and I, we'll make sure that it gets to all the chair.
Great.
Troy, do you want to talk about too, like the, kind of the rollout of it? That's one of the things we've been talking about is to really do a true training um for, for board members. And also um, we, that is a part of our contract with legal to help with that, to be able to provide some of that support uh a- and trainings. And, and just the other thing too, as we um, I, I think I'm, I'm going back to five where you got a lot, little nervous about did, did uh the clerk see all this? Cause it, it does add, I mean, uh, develop a scheduled training programs. But Troy and I are talking about that. That certainly wouldn't be putting, dumping it on Jesse and say, did all of this? Cause I think we are on the same page. We need to get everybody at the same table at the same time, record it and have that be a part as well. That they watched that webinar if they couldn't attend.
And it really speaks to Molly's point about standardizing things and making sure that not only across the state, but here in our community, that all of our boards, commissions and committees are all trained, aware, uh, and to Carolyn's point, we'll make sure it's recorded because as we all know, we can't pin everybody down one time, one location. Uh, but it's something that we'll coordinate with our council and make sure that that is available to all the boards, committees and commission members. So that way we're on, all on the same page and we'll work, you know, really more just talk with Jessica, just to let her know, hey, we're gonna work this side of it and this is what it looks like. We'll put that agenda together for her. I think um with the recording, that will allow us when, when a new committee or board or uh is appointed um or a new member is elected or appointed, then they can watch the recording as well. So I think that, that helps us in that situation.
Okay. And then I just want to, again, just for people at home who aren't necessarily seeing this, um, a, a large uh portion of the handbook is absolutely dedicated to knowledge about open meeting law
Mm-hmm.
and transparency, uh, in addition to the behavioral aspects of being on a committee or, or a board. Um, so this is um absolutely part of the select board's response to concerns about, you know, making sure everybody's aware of and following open meeting law going forwards. This is part of our methodology to improve that.
Absolutely.
And is what we just voted on um the code of conduct guidelines, is that that's in supplement to 9.1?
I, I don't have.
Which is the standards of conduct?
Yeah, would be, it would, the code of conduct is going to be a supplement to the handbook.
Okay.
Just to be clear. To make sure that we're covering all of our legal bases.
Yeah.
Sue Lewowski wants to speak.
Um, hi, Sue.
Uh, in addition to Lisa Mead or one of our attorneys doing kind of seminars, I know Maya has seminars on open meeting law that are at no cost to us as well. So um, yeah, you know, it's, I understand that boards and committees, you know, they're not paid and sometimes uh it's difficult to get um, everybody to uh, a single seminar or whatever, but we could schedule something with Maya as well as an alternate.
Agreed. And thank you for that, Sue. I think uh, you know, this is an opportunity for us to set all of our board and committee members up for success. That's, that's.
Absolutely. I agree.
Um, so since this is the second viewing of a rather significant handbook, but, um, but we did see it before. And so um, I'm prepared to make a motion that we accept the Hadley Board Commission Committee Handbook um 2023 as um final.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Jane. Motion by Molly, second by Jane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Isor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, for your time.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Troy.
All right, um, moving on to town administrators' report.
Okay, I'm just, I, you do have a written report there. And I just want to highlight a few of those items, um, and of course, you're aware of how the weather has impacted Hadley. And I just wanted to um. Just show my appreciation and as well as on behalf of you all for all of the involvement of the concern for the residents, the businesses, the farmers, the properties. Um, fire department, DPW, uh, boots on the ground, going door to door, AquaVita, Honey Pot, the farmers, to make sure that people were all set with them. Uh, their propane takes were, were secure, any electrical hazards, they made sure of all that, all of that, they actually followed up again today. Um, right now, there's no safe, no life safety concerns or building code issues, but they'll, they'll stay on board. So really, it was great and Representative Comer, I'm sorry, uh, Senator Comerford. And Dan Carey, uh, and Representative Dan Carey were also on the grounds along with some state officials as well. So there is a, a recovery, we put it on the website, um, that there is, that was provided by Senator Comerford. Uh, and it's, uh, it's on the website, if there are some resources that municipality, I mean, this, businesses or residents or farmers need. Um, there is a flood recovery focus, so people can do that.
I had a resident question if there's some way they can give to help.
I am sure there probably is, um, that's kind of a, we could ask uh. Our senator or if they are aware of any nonprofits that they could give to.
Thank you.
Is our ag commission um directly involved? I wonder if they have some more of a role to play here.
Yeah, because I know MDR is rolling out stuff as well as the USDA.
Yeah.
That, that may be a part of that, that resource, I'm not sure, you know, answer that. And then, as you are aware, that recent silver alert of the older gentleman who um was missing since yesterday morning was found through due diligence from. Public Safety as well as neighboring towns pulling together, so that was really good news to hear. And our dot gov transition, thanks to Jennifer who helped coordinate that, we had a few little hiccups, but uh lots of patience was shown by staff and um. Whenever technology is involved and there's a transition, there's always a little, some hiccup, so. That is complete and I wanted to give you an update on the fiber, I talked with Chief Spankneval. But they are still waiting for a couple of poles to be relocated due to the Route nine construction, as soon as that's done, uh, our vendor will have um. Uh, the ability to finish that final section to the mall and which will allow the access for the public, public safety repeater. Uh, the ambulance, we are still waiting on the state, they have um a couple of things that they still need to do and, and most importantly, the license for that, but it's, we're waiting. And the compensation study that's moving forward, Troy will be working with Collins Center to set up all of the interviews with all of the employees, scroll over their job descriptions, their roles. Um, and their titles. Uh, just an update on special town meeting, I did want to just bring to the highlight again, our community development block grant, grant projects, which includes the. Uh, the housing rehabilitation and housing aging in place, uh, we are the lead agency with, with self Hadley, um, we're, we need to. Uh, help Pioneer Valley Planning Commission step up that outreach, so we're going to put a couple of signs out, um, I guess I have authority to approve on, on that court, this area. Um, and also the, the website, uh, Jennifer put some things up from Pioneer Valley to get edu, people educated if they, to learn more about that. Um, and then the Hadley ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, that is in progress, but I don't have an update from that, all, all done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Can we get information to hand out at the senior center?
You have information, yes, yeah, from the very beginning, yes, he did connect with Haley, I said.
Okay.
Yeah, Haley's actually been very helpful with the other program, the ADA Self-Evaluation. Um, I'm not going to go over all the other things, uh, so. Uh, well, I'll, I'll let you know where the procurement is, uh, no bids were received for the COA solar project. Jennifer's reached out to a couple of bidders, hasn't heard back on what some of the roadblocks are, uh, and she's reached out to Inspector General's office to. Get, get some assistance on what we can do next with that. Um, the town hall columns are advertised and received um several requests, um, but we won't know until the bids are due. And then Russell School should be going to legal tomorrow, so that's where we are.
All right, thanks for doing the report.
You're welcome.
Now, it's good to have a.
Yep.
A checklist.
And it's good for me, it's good for me, so, and, oh, I will be, I, I always put at the bottom, it's not exclusive, but I will be adding to it. Um, because there are some DPW things that Scott's been working with that I would like to bring back more often than when he's able to come and do an update.
Okay. Items for future discussion, green communities.
As liaison, I'll just say that we're hoping to be able to work on grant. Um, organization and how to spend the money and we should bring that up at the next meeting, we have more information.
Jane, can you explain how that works?
Um. So hopefully.
We have to be very careful, that's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, it's for the future, so I don't think you could discuss it.
We'll discuss it in our next meeting, that's what it says.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, does anyone have a, a liaison report? Or us?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, really a D burning, yeah. Um, announcements?
Um, I have one.
Yeah.
The Alex put together a flyer for us for the boards and vacancies, uh. Boards and committees vacancies, and we'll be posting that on the website tomorrow morning, just blasting it out to everybody and um hopefully. Y'all have a big appointment list for your next meeting, but that's ready to go out and I think Carolyn was going to do the press release for it.
All right, throw it on the Hadley community page. All right, are there any other announcements?
I do have a couple of um passings, I don't know if I mentioned it at the last meeting about Joe. Skavitch passing, the elder uh mark matriarch of uh JJ Waskevich Farms, uh, he did pass, um, so. Um, our condolences to the Waskevich family, it, it wasn't in Hadley, but um, he's been well known throughout the community throughout these years, so. Did want to send our condolences to his family. Uh, we had a Victoria Cuzera, um, husband is Don Cuzera, she had lived here and in Hatfield and. Um, was a part of our community at a point. And then there's a Kathleen um LeBarge from Hatfield, uh, her son Leslie Junior and wife Ivan live here in Hadley, so. Our condolences to their family also. And I could say the Brunel family also on the passing of uh Mr. Brunel, um, Brunel Marina, um, after the tragic loss over there, um. And then in the midst of it of his passing too, so his condolences also to their family.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Jane.
Roll call vote, part, uh, Keegan?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Isor?
Yes.